Welcome to this meeting regarding our governing documents. We will be focusing on the covenants, conditions, and restrictions, otherwise known as CCNRs. We thank you for taking the time to understand this issue. We'll be answering questions in a later portion of this, and one of the questions that you might be thinking is, since Third already has spent money to rewrite the governing documents, why not just accept them as written? Well, we'll answer that as this meeting progresses, along with other questions. We are your neighbors. Most of us have served on boards and as officers. I am Carol Moore. I have a business background as a former president of my own industrial distribution business. I have a master's from the University of Denver. I served on Laguna Hills Mutual Board for six years, three of those as president. I also served on the GRF Board. The CCNRs are important legal documents that run with the land. They are so important that they are recorded at the county. Here today are four other neighbors who also have business backgrounds, and most also served on our boards or have legal experience writing CCNRs. They will provide their background as well as their experience. We'll begin with Catherine Freshley.
Hi, I'm Catherine Freshley. I think many of you may know me in the Village. I've lived in the Village for 27 years. I have an electrical engineering degree. I worked for General Electric for 20-some years, and I had executive training through them. I also spent 20 years in executive management consulting. I served six years on the Third Mutual Board, and I was treasurer for three of those years. I spent three years on the GRF Board, and I was president for one year. Presently, I am director of the El Toro Water District Board. I'm a director on the South Orange County Wastewater Authority. I'm a member of the Orange County Local Agency Formation Commission, and I also serve on the Joint Powers Insurance Authority for the California Water Districts.
Our next -- thank you, Catherine. And our next speaker is Rosemary Quinn. I will be referring her after this as Rose. Thank you, Rose. Would you please give your background?
Good morning. I'm Rosemary Quinn. I've lived in Laguna Woods Village for 18 years. I work full-time, therefore I do not have the background in the local organizations that my fellow participants have. But I do want to share with you this morning my legal, paralegal background. I worked for Kay Havnanny and a large builder in California, New Jersey, and 10 other states. I wrote seven -- the bylaws and CCRs for seven communities. I also worked at a large law firm where we represented condo associations. Though this work was not done in California, the procedures I'm going to talk about today do not have -- are not state-specific as the laws are. I'm going to share with you about the process that I was involved in that produced documents with owner participation that were as understandable as CCRs can be and yet had no mistakes.
Thank you so much, Rose. And our next participant is Bob Hatch.
Good morning, and thank you. I am Bob Hatch. I've been a resident since 2003. I am a California native. Today, I'm a little cranky and creaky and technology handicapped, but I do believe I have experience that is helpful to the community. The most pertinent part of my career is the 31 years I spent with CBRE, formerly known as Coldwell Banker. It is a full-service company that has services, including appraisal, mortgage banking, brokerage, appraisal, et cetera, and certainly mortgage lending. I was 10 years in sales specializing in retail properties. I was 21 years specializing in various managing positions, including National Director of Marketing and National Accounts, President of Advisory Service, Executive Vice President and Director of the parent company, and responsible for long-range business planning and shareholder relations. When I joined the firm, we were the largest in California. When I retired, we were the world's largest. Today, we're still the world's leader, and we manage over 6 billion square feet of space worldwide. Not one square foot is dedicated to a homeowner association. My volunteer and work-related experience includes a member and panelist of the Urban Land Institute, a member of the International Council of Shopping Centers. I served with the American Arbitration Association as an arbitrator, and I served as an expert witness. My volunteer work that's not work-related is part of the Stanford Alumni Consulting Team. I'm a member of eight HOAs and president of three. I was a member of five private clubs and a board member of three, and I was a director of three maritime museums. My third mutual experience includes three years on the board. One year as treasurer, one year as first vice president, and later I chaired long-range planning, and I served as a committee advisor on both M&amp;C and the Architectural Committee. My GRF experience was three years of service, all three years on CAC, and two years as a chair. I also served as a vice chair of finance. I've been a Village volunteer. I was the director of the Laguna Woods Village Foundation. I was a member and president of the Village -- Friends of the Village. I also participated on the City Land Use Committee. I have a long-term experience which I think can be helpful in future planning, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Bob. And next is Jules Allen. Jules is responding remotely. Jules?
Oh, he's -- Jules is --
We can't hear you, Jules.
There he is. Now he is.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Thank you.
Hi. I'm still Jules Allen, former Third Director. I'm a practicing lawyer, but I don't practice HOA law in California. My early professional career centered on civil rights, environment, and entertainment law, but my life changed in 1980 when I successfully argued that Congress did not mean it when it limited its three remedy sections of the Trademark Act only to trademark registrants. My client's sixth did not own a registration. I convinced a federal judge in Manhattan that Congress didn't mean what it said, that the judge should ignore the statutory bar and then invoke a rarely-used section of the act as the basis for a never-before-used John Doe order to these counterfeit merchandise being sold outside of Madison Square Garden, where my client was performing. The judge bought the argument, so did scores of other judges around the country. Those orders revolutionized the merchandising business by clearing parking lots of bootleg t-shirts being peddled outside major arenas. So anyone who wanted a souvenir, and every teenager wants a souvenir, had to pay my clients exorbitant prices inside the arena. Needless to say, I became quite popular, and I handled litigation for Billy Joel, Willie Nelson, Van Halen, Janet Jackson, and her older brother, the Three Stooges, the Oakland Raiders. I even got an injunction for the recently sainted Pope John Paul II. Congress then built its Trademark Counterfeiting Act on my novel procedure. A distinguished judge once amusingly accused me of changing the procedures in every federal courthouse in the country, his exact words. It's actually true, because orders -- these orders are issued without notice previously and almost unheard of example of judicial activism. Now these orders are granted at the drop of a hat. Today's discussion addresses what gains me by a few minutes of fame: the meaning not of statutes but of contracts and rules, which are interpreted the same way. Because no matter what you're being told, these proposed new rules represent a serious matter and potential threat to every person living in this community, and they should be soundly rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Jules. So we've covered, and I think we've established, the credentials of the people who are here today. Our next portion of this agenda is to speak to why we -- our reasons for voting no. And once again, we will begin with Catherine Freshley.
The reasons that I voted no. I was invited to participate on the insurance discussions with the board during September and to be an advocate for the document changes. However, once I read the rewritten CCNRs and the revised bylaws, I could not support the actions being planned and taken by the board. I talked with an attorney to make sure my understanding of the areas we are about to raise are valid interpretations of the California Corporations Code. From those discussions, I believe we do not need to create new CCNRs to resolve the insurance issue. Article 11, "Insurance," offers the option, "Or such other fire and casualty insurance as the mutual shall determine gives substantially equal or greater protection, ensuring the owners and their mortgagees as their interest may appear, and as to each of such policies will not be voided or impaired thereby." We have been operating with these CCNRs since 1987, and we have adequate insurance -- and we had adequate insurance coverage. The community carried $700 million in coverage, shared by United, Third, and GRF. Since 1996, the maximum yearly loss has been approximately $10 million. The most recent insurance industry business model projects the maximum probable loss for the community to be $150 million. Since I serve on the California Water Industry Joint Powers Insurance Authority, I understand the difficulty in obtaining insurance in California with all the recent wildfires throughout the state. The Paradise Water District had significant losses a couple years ago. The JPIA Executive Director had to spend over two weeks in London educating the Lloyds of London firms to ensure coverage availability for the California Water Districts. The community recently was required to secure a community valuation so that the insurance companies could project their coverage risks. The Village is now valued at roughly $3.5 billion, and Third Mutual at $1.5 billion. So you can see the challenges faced by the community for insurance. How much insurance coverage should we buy? We need to have a discussion on this since replacement cost is not available from the industry. We need to be reasonable and practical, recognizing the higher the coverage, the more the monthly assessment for the members. Unfortunately, we have devoted our time and energy revising the CCNRs instead of working with the community to arrive at the most reasonable insurance coverage based on our lost history and the insurance industry's most probable loss projection. If the belief is that the community leadership needs more flexibility than the CCNRs already provide by selecting the amount of coverage, then we should be working to develop an amendment stating the minimum level of coverage, such as two to three times the most probable loss for the mutual. Let's get the insurance issue resolved. Then, if important, focus on the revised CCNRs and bylaws. To me, this is much more logical.
Thank you, Catherine. Rose, would you give your reasons for voting no?
Yes, I'd like to tell you why I cannot vote or did not vote for the Third Mutual restated bylaws and CCRs. It's because I was a paralegal, because I wrote these CCNRs. Let's start at the beginning so make sure that you really understand what this document means to you. As owners, they are the rules that your property are governed by. In our case, all of us have to live together on a highly-dense populated -- very highly-densely populated property. And we do this by agreements between the property owner and the association of property owners. When you buy a property at Laguna Woods, you agree to the rules, and if you do not abide by them, you can be sanctioned for them. So it's very important that these are rules that we can support. And why are these -- so you can see why these are so important. The present board's voting process of approval of the currently restated CCNRs first arrived to me as a six-page, small-print letter from council. It informed me that the governing documents needed to be replaced because they were very old. There was a serious insurance issue that could not be realistically handled by the current wording, and there were going to be changes in responsibilities for maintenance by owners. Then, three town hall meetings with questions were held, but we could not ask a person. COVID prevented that, but there was no phone or email direct contact with a person. It was then announced that Exhibit E was found to have 28 mistakes. 19 mistakes in the side of the chart that talked about responsibilities for original elements and nine responsibilities for those where elements had been altered. The amended Exhibit E was put online, but it was not put with the document that was sent to us to be voted on. It was then announced that a current California law had overturned two sections of the restated documents concerning leasing. Again, these wordings were not a part of the document that we could vote on. People wanted their ballots back because they felt that they did not have updated information at the time that they voted, but we couldn't get them back. So there's a basic rule that I believe: Never agree or, in this case, vote for a legal document with mistakes in it. Would you knowingly sign a mortgage document where the exhibit had the wrong property description? The whole process felt wrong to me, so I compared it with the method that we had used. Significantly, I think, were two differences in guiding principles. We felt that documents were not just the board documents, they were owner documents. If members' votes were needed in order to pass the document, then membership input was needed to write them. In our procedures, the board and the council first hammered out the documents with the changes that they felt were needed. Then that document was taken apart. We had -- we discarded for the moment the sections that we could not change because of law, the sections that had not changed from the original document, and we were left with the sections that did change. These were then put into a chart where the current wording was shown right next to the new proposed wording. That way, our members could see very easily what the changes were and feel the -- and recognize the impact on them. Then the easily understood -- then we had an educational session, an educational session, CCNRs and bylaws 101. What did these mean? What were the implications? And one by one, what were the changes? Owners had the chance then in follow-up town halls to ask questions, and there was discussion. The owners could then go over the documents with their neighbors to decide whether they wanted to vote yes or no. Using the feedback from these two sessions, the legal team would then go back, refashion changes that had been of concern, and the final document was proposed for the vote. Ballots with instructions were sent how and when to return them, but most importantly, the whole document that was being proposed was sent to them. And that is part of California law. It is -- if you would like to look, it's California Civil Code 5115E. Now the accompanying letter made sense because people understood what was in that document and what was being asked of them.
You're referring, of course, to the documents the way you did.
Yes. This whole -- this process --
Thank you.
-- that I'm -- the second process is the way that not only our firm, but we have asked three different condominium lawyers here in California, and they have also voiced that this is a better process. Okay, so let me share then. So the second process, it's up to you. Do you think the second process or the first process that we have used is the one that will get us the best document? Let's end by giving two of my concerns. All my paralegal training emphasized that ultimately it's the legal team's responsibility to ensure that no mistakes are ever found in any segment of any documents that go to clients. So when the board treasurer nobly took the blame for some of the mistakes in the original document, we need to understand that both the whole board and the legal team do -- should also have reviewed and found those changes before they ever got to us. This creates a trust-me situation. We're being told to rely on the very people who made the mistakes. They're saying that they will change that document that we see now or we were given to vote on to include the amended Exhibit E. We don't want that. It should not come to that. We should have had that correct document the first time. Because of these important lapses, I believe the legal time and resulting expense it took to graphically create the new exhibit, prepare the video for the treasurer making his admissions, and sending written notification to owners of these incorrect sections of the restated CCNRs should not be billed to the mutual. Second, since Third Mutual pays such a high price for updating these governing documents, I guess I have the question, why are we not the owners of the copyright of these documents? Who really owns the documents? Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Bob, would you respond to your reasons for voting no?
Well, if the reasons stated by Catherine and Rose were not sufficient to influence you to vote no, I'm going to add a third element. I voted no because I believe the proposed consolidation is harmful. We are a unique community in size. We are 6,100 units. We're even more diverse in terms of demographics. When I say demographics, I mean age level, cultural, and certainly income level. The one-size-fits-all policy of budget assessments and use of common area and lifestyle does not fit. It does not fit. I was startled when I am reading the letter that accompanied the ballot. It wrote -- it read, and I quote, "Cortezzi intended to consolidate the mutuals into one." What is the evidence of that? I believe that is a huge misstatement. In fact, there is heavy evidence to the contrary. We have two sister communities in California, both developed by Ross Cortezzi. Both of those are smaller than ours in total. They are less diverse than ours, but each have their separate mutuals, and more importantly, they set their own budgets and service levels and therefore the assessments. They definitely did not comply with the statement that he intended to consolidate 6,100 mutuals into one. And today, I don't believe that any developer would contemplate a single mutual as large and diverse as ours. I was involved with Cortezzi on the planning of the Laguna Hills Mall. I negotiated the deals with the department stores. I introduced him to his development partner, Ernest Hahn. I served -- supervised our leasing team, and I met regularly with Cortezzi over more than three years. He was a bold and an innovator. If he had intended to develop these communities as single units, he would have done so. He was an interesting personality. He was smart and innovative. He certainly was no fool. Consolidation, as proposed, will make the board's job easier, but I think the more important factor is, does it result in a better consideration and better decisions? The 59 mutual documents, the existing documents, are all identical in terms of content, except they have different parcel numbers. Each is about 50 pages or less, so the claim that any action requires thousands of pages of record review just doesn't make sense to me. The results could possibly be worse. It will be difficult to meet the needs of the various housing neighborhoods, and it can lead to a less democratic style of governance. As far as making the job easier, I think many of us will agree that the job is really, really tough, and there are ways in which it could be eased. I'm going to begin with, I think, more reliance on staff. We've got great competence there, and in the past, I think there's been a tendency to intimidate or certainly not embolden staff members to state what they really think. I think that one of the basic problems we have here is the fact that our committees are staffed virtually fully with board members. If we fill committees with non-board members, we will gain a higher level of expertise. It will be easier to fill the positions on those committees, and it will certainly improve the communication with the membership, and it will also provide more continuity in policy. And there certainly are study groups outside that would be willing to help us at no fee. Colleges and university grad students, for instance, and their professors would be more than happy to participate or at least witness our activities. We really are a living laboratory. We are an example of what not to do as well as what can we do. But finally, I'd say, what's the hurry? If we're going to consider consolidation, let's do it right, because I believe that undoing consolidation will be more difficult than doing it. I think we could consider forming districts by neighborhoods based upon unit type similarity. It is possible we could elect directors according to districts. There may need -- there may be no need for consolidation at all. Or if we are going to consolidate, let's consolidate on mutuals that have similarities. So in closing, I would say, if you haven't voted, vote no, because I think this could be the most important vote in our history. So thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Bob. And our next participant is Jules, and Jules is also going to speak to why he voted no. Jules?
Yes, my overriding objection is that it represents a one-size-fits-all, take-it-or-leave-it set of documents that seriously affects every aspect of our life here, and it doesn't reflect the interests of a single member. In other words, nobody asks a single ordinary member of what they run in a document that will control their lives. That's not normal order. Normally, when people adopt a set of rules that will control their lives, you want to ask the people, who are most affected by that? That's the way you do things. That shows respect, and that's a big problem. Our board should be viewed as a nurturing entity, devoted at all times to our best interests. We're not a police state. We really want to hear what our members say. I've gotten a lot of responses to my email blasts, and the responses I've gotten suggest some real hostility here. Here's a few of the recent email blasts that were sent me. These were unsolicited. One, I am shocked by that they're trying to seriously make changes in the dark. Another, I feel I was misinformed. Another, after hearing from other members of the draconian West Hays, we've decided this is not for us. They're going to move on. They're going to move. The association is treating the property owners as idiots. Another one says, I am fed up. I plan to move out of the community. The sledgehammer attempt is just fishy. Another one says, I voted no because it's a sham. There's no reason why boards and members should have to feel this adversarial sense. The members are not idiots. They sense when the board is on their side, and they sense when the board is not. Here's just a couple. I did a very modest survey. I got 50 responses from the survey. Forty-seven said they voted no or want to vote no. Three voted yes. I sent down that email blast last week urging a no vote. Again, I got 67 unsolicited responses. 60 were for no, seven were for yes. These conceitably unscientific surveys, I thought, but they sure do paint a pretty clear picture. The vast majority of members who are The vast majority of members who have expressed their opinion are strongly against the ballot initiative. So what better reason for the board to withdraw the proposal? Not to do so would be the strongest evidence that the board really doesn't care about what the members think, and we really should. Bob has already talked about merging the 59 mutuals, and I have nothing to add to that. But there are some provisions in here that are really frightening. One is that pest control and intrusion damage costs can be transferred to the members in the future. Pest control, termites, bedbugs, where you have to tent the entire building. It could cost a fortune. Now, Director Muchnick wrote me and said, they have no such intentions. But the problem is, it's right in these documents. I don't want to read what they say, because you should read them yourself. It's 7.5 and 7.6, A, B, and C. Where did C? Each owner shall be responsible for damage to the owner's unit. The corporation shall not be financially liable. Now, did the board, the really interesting question, did the board approve those sections intending to reserve the right to transfer their, those costs to us sometime in the future? Or is there another, more innocent explanation, that those provisions were not their idea? They were just two scores of boilerplate provisions that were tossed into this huge pot of minestrone, 205 pages long. They were provided to the board by its lawyer, who obviously had these forms sitting on their shelf. That's what lawyers do. I'm an entertainment lawyer. I've got a set of forms that will fill two feet of shelf space. So, you know, and that's the problem. These scores of separate provisions were funneled into these two documents without any input from the folks who will be living under their roof. So of course it will contain a lot of provisions that we wouldn't choose ourselves, because we didn't choose ourselves. They just came out of the blue. They're a whole set of page documents, take it or leave it, thrown together without any participation of the people who live under its rules. I liken these rules to the U.S. Constitution. They'll govern us for a long time. Can you see Jimmy Madison walking into Constitution Hall and saying, I've got this great set of rules. We'll call it the U.S. Constitution. It'll control every aspect of our life. Why don't we just adopt it exactly as it was written? How far do you think that would have gotten? Well, it didn't. It took four months, and it took a lot of debate, and a lot of negotiation, and a lot of horse trading, but it survived. We got a document that has lived, we've, you know, survived mostly intact for 230 years. No set of rules intended to govern all aspects of a large village can possibly be adapted as originally drafted. With scores of separate subjects, there's only one good way of dealing with it, and that is to allow people to come forward and say what they want in the documents. We're the ones that should be deciding, or at least giving our opinion. Another problem is the members' protection from unscrupulous contractors is abandoned. The current bylaws authorize the board to discipline contractors who perform services in our manners and expose our members to substantial liability, tens of thousands of dollars. It's in the present bylaws, the new bylaws, the new CCNRs removes that. That's ridiculous. Removing directors becomes impossible. Right now, you can remove director by a majority vote of the voting public. So if not 6,100 people, if 1,000 people have a vote on removal of a director and 501 vote him out or her out, that's it. But under the present, under the new law that they proposed, the only way you'd get rid of a director, no matter what they did, was to have a majority of the 6,102 members. Look at all the trouble they are having just getting a vote on something as important as our CCNR. Removing a director, therefore, would become totally impossible. Term limits are flatly removed. The legislature accidentally removed it in a recent statute. There's a movement put to clean that up, but the new CCNR essentially says, there will be no term limits. That's a big problem, because term limits represent a strong public policy. The benefit of incumbency ensures reelection. Longevity creates influence. Influence encourages corruption. That's the reason why most political bodies insist on term limits. It's a classic good government initiative. Some of the longest-sitting New York legislators are now sitting in prison. So as you see, there's both philosophical and practical problems for these proposed rules, and I yield back the balance of my thoughts.
Thank you so very much. I think each person really gave a well-rounded background on why we voted no. And so now, we are going to respond to some questions, but before we begin, we had questions, some questions related to Third Mutual, and we can't answer Third Mutual's questions relating to how they set up the election, or flaws, or whatever in the election. So we won't, we're just unable to do that, because that wasn't something that we had a part in. However, I do have some of the questions that have been sent in, and one of them said, Third Board advocates continuing with the balloting even after mistakes in Exhibit E. were revealed. The treasurer implied all the mistakes would be fine, so why not wait until, would be corrected, and so why not wait until after the election to correct them? Would someone like to respond to that question? Rose, would you respond, please?
That's exactly what we're suggesting, is the proper course, to go back, to change, and to have hearings, educate the people, educate our members, then have question and answers to be very sure that they understand, then rewrite them, then everybody gets a copy to look at it, then we can say yes or no.
Is there anyone else who wants to add to that?
I'm not sure I understood.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm not sure I understood the intent of the question. Could you read it again?
Sure, certainly.
Could you speak a little bit louder? I really can't hear.
I certainly will. Third Board advocates continuing with the balloting even after mistakes in Exhibit E. were revealed. The treasurer implied all the mistakes would be fine and corrected, so why not wait until after the election to correct them? Did you want to respond?
Yes.
Go ahead.
One of the reasons that we can't wait is because once these documents are approved, the next step is to file them with the county. So they become the legal documents for the community, and going on afterwards then to try to change them becomes even more difficult. That's the reason we suggest that these documents be pulled, the election, you know, be canceled. Let's sit down and really plan this, get the insurance issue out of the way, because that's the one that has really created the most problems. Then let's focus. If we're going to consolidate and redo the CCNRs, then let's take the time to do it. As Jules mentioned, you know, the Constitution, they argued the Constitution for four months, and it stood for 230 years. I view CCNRs as essentially the Constitution for this community, and that's why it is difficult to change. We don't want the CCNRs to be easy to change, and that's one of the things where I'm, one of the reasons, one of the opposition features I have, is that they've lowered then the requirement for changing the CCNRs from 2/3 to 50%. And I object to that. The Constitution is difficult to change, and our CCNRs should be difficult to change.
Thank you so much. There's another, there's a series here, but one of them I'm going to skip down to, because it actually ties in with that previous question. And the question was, why can't Exhibit E. be corrected as a Scribner's error? Would you, someone care to respond to that? Rose?
Hi. Yes, the doctrine of Scribner's error does provide for correction of mistakes, but there's a, when I looked up the definition, I find that there's a second part, that any changes that have to do with property rights, and certainly our CCNRs would fall into that, the owners or the people passing the document have to be told before they vote.
Does anyone want to add to that? We can't hear you.
There you go.
Okay, here. You know, this is a really good question, but it gets exactly to the major problem. Let's assume that Robert Muchnick is accurate, and I believe him because he's the director and he has, you know, more, more understanding of this than I do right now. But let's assume that it can be changed and corrected as a Scribner's error. But that only concerns one of scores of problems that are in these documents, and that's exactly why we should withdraw the ballot initiative and then start to very carefully address not only insurance, which we can handle very quickly, but all the other problems, the pest costs, the intrusion costs, how we handle outside contractors, how we handle another problem, which is whether a member has a right to a hearing, whether due process applies in a HOA, which is a really interesting issue. But these are issues for us to determine. And so therefore, the idea that the insurance problem, or whatever, or the cost problem that our friend Mr. Muchnick had, that's excellent issues, but they should be handled before we are presented with this gigantic set of papers, take it or leave it, one-size-fits-all.
Thank you so much. We'll have time for a few more. One of them, the board president stated that the new CCNRs are better than 59 different old ones that make it hard to manage. Why is this wrong? Who would like to take that? Bob, you want to try that one?
Well, I can hear that. Well, I think the answer is that the original 59 documents were all identical, except for the legal description of the property. Each of those probably are less than 50 pages. If they're longer or shorter, it's because there are more or less units in that particular document. So essentially, there should be no hardship in dealing with the fact that there are 59 separate mutuals, which are, have documents, but which are all identical. So I don't know whether that is clear.
No, that's very clear. Does anyone else care to add to that one? There was a question that I--
I was gonna, I was gonna--
Were you, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I think, and I'm only making an assumption on this, is that I think one of the issues is that when it comes to manor modifications, because that's one of the benefits with having the multiple mutuals, because each one then, as Bob indicated, has its own characteristics. A lot of these mutuals, a lot of the manners, as they were built, were very different, and each mutual had a certain characteristic. And relative then to if people need to have an opportunity to use exclusive use area, and, you know, some of the common area, and devote it and convert it to exclusive use, some manners, that can be possible without any conflict with neighbors. Some manners can never do it, if they're on, if they're in a LH 21, or if they're in a, if a garden villa, or they're in a second floor, like I am on something, I can't expand mine. But that doesn't mean that others who have the opportunity shouldn't be allowed that opportunity as long as it doesn't affect the neighbors. When I was on the board, and this was about 10 years ago now, we allowed that because it allowed the community some flexibility. We were very careful, we had a procedure to have all the neighbors, anybody that would be affected, had to basically approve the modification or allowing, if it was basically adding a small patio outside a sliding glass window in, you know, in one of the Casa Rosa, I think it is. What's your, what kind is yours, Carol? What's your model?
It's called a Navarro.
Navarro. And, you know, and so it has two sliding doors coming out the bedrooms, but the patio was only there for the living room, and the bedrooms were on each side. Well, oftentimes, it made sense, over the years, to allow, if owners wanted to put a, extend the patio, so that when you stepped out of a bedroom sliding door, you weren't stepping into the, into the flower garden. You were actually stepping into a patio. Well, if that didn't interfere with any of the neighbors, then why should that be rejected? And we used that practically. Now, what happens if you consolidate into 6,102, then the law says you've got to get the majority of all 6,000, and you've got some of the 6,000 and don't even know the street in which we're talking about, because of the size of the community. I think in many cases, it's, there may be another way to get around it, but by having the individual mutuals, then the residents or the owners within that mutual are the ones that have the say as to whether there should be any change in allowing common area to become exclusive use common area. And to me, for our community, that's what makes this community so unique, is we allow that, because, you know, you go to any of the new HOAs, I mean, the way they're constructed, there is an impossible for anybody to make any kind of modification. And I think that's the uniqueness of this community, and we need to keep that if this community is going to continue to exist. That's my opinion.
Thank you so much. I think it was, pardon me, I think it was answered also in a letter to the editor, a well-written letter, expressing how the people who live in an area should have the right to decide, not someone who lives in some other section of the community, has no impact on them. So that's an interesting question.
I'd like to add--
I think we have time for a couple more.
Bob wanted to add.
Pardon, I'm sorry, Bob.
I'd like to add, because there's a little bit of history. Not too long ago, favors were really granted to members to do some outrageous types of variants, which were, some of them were successfully battled and were denied, but they were terribly intrusive on neighbors' use of common area and space and views and so forth. And then, we started to build a, what we call a decision tree, which would lend some kind of logical process as to when we should allow a variance. And we got pretty close to a completed system, when all of a sudden, there was a 180-degree turn in terms of how we allowed use of common area to virtually nothing, even though it would make total common sense, improve a manor's lifestyle, and do absolutely no harm to a neighbor. So that's a main consideration for me, which I've been personally involved for years.
I too have noticed that. In fact, I, there's one I walk by daily, and the person, this happens to be, there are the two sides to this, the person, the individual was able to add an entire room, even though the neighbor complained, and people who didn't live near there made the decision that the party could do it, and they didn't face the impact. So it goes both ways on that. One other question, I think we have time for a couple more. How much insurance does Third Mutual really need to cover the new update property evaluation? Would someone like to take that one?
Okay, I can--
Catherine, you want to take that?
Yeah, my opinion is that, you know, if the insurance industry modeling basically says that the community, the most probable maximum loss is $150 million, then in my opinion, it should be some multiple of that. And when we had 700 million, and the community has had 700 million, so we have been adequately insured. One of the things that was concerning, though, was that the 700 million was limited, and since it's covered United and GRF and Third Mutual, if, let's say, we had a massive catastrophe, and United had the big issue, and if they used 400, 500 million of it, then the limit was 700 million, and so any damage in Third Mutual could be limited. And so that's a risk, but it's a judgment. And let's recognize, you know, that boards, when they make decisions-- And let's recognize, you know, that boards, when they make decisions, you know, and if the decisions are logical, defensible, basically are, is something that, you know, is relying on expert opinion, and particularly the insurance industry telling you, well, this is the maximum probable you're going to have, this is what you historically have spent, you know, 10 million a year, then to over-insure, or to go with 700 million for the community, was a reasonable approach. And it, and it was, and it fulfilled the current CCNRs, because as long as any owner or mortgagee would not sustain a loss that could not be covered by the insurance, then that was the, that was what the, what the current CCNR said was the protection form, that they would have the coverage available. And that's exactly what, what the decision is as to how much insurance should you carry. And is there, you know, you can argue, I mean, some people will say, you know, when you buy your own insurance for your house, okay? We all make a decision as to how much do we want to insure. Do we insure everything for replacement value? Do we insure for, do we insure for what we bought it for? Oftentimes, we do replacement value, but that's individuals. There are some people who don't even believe in insurance, so they don't buy any. You know, so that in itself, and we, and unfortunately, I can give you some history, we had a fire here in the community where, in one of the manors, and unfortunately, that particular owner did not believe in insurance-
Remember that.
And he did not have any insurance to cover all of his personal effects within the building. We rebuilt the whole manor, we rebuilt it, but he didn't have any insurance to carry himself forward. And I assume he had adequate resources to continue to live, but I was absolutely surprised when that, when he told me that, and I was con-
Well, I think you remember that, because not only did that happen, I believe I was president at the time, we also helped him, he had no paperwork.
That's right.
And we showed him how he could go to the county and go online, and we helped him get his APN, which is his parcel number, and start accumulating paperwork that was totally lost in that fire. We're, we have one hour for this, and to make sure that we stay within our boundaries, obviously, we have, we have only the one hour, so we have to move right along. And I, we may have time to slip in another question, but to make certain we cover what we intended to do today-
We've only got eight minutes left.
Pardon? I know, thank you.
Okay.
And so I'm going to suggest that we start with a closing, and then if we have time, we can stick something in, but I, so Jules, I'm going to start with you, if you would start with your closing. We cannot hear you.
There he is, okay.
We only had an hour. Hopefully, we have touched on some of the more serious objections, such as the power to dump costs, the pest control, and outside intrusion damage onto our backs in the future, the failure to rein in the power of the board to discipline members, making the board powerless to discipline unscrupulous contractors, merging all 59 mutuelles. But my major objection is the take it or leave it nature of this. That, and, and I have to object to the way the, this idea was sold to us. It was sold to us by giving us a bunch of town halls, but they really weren't traditional town halls. Town halls are held in order to hear members' concerns and then to respond. But the board was not listening and couldn't listen to our concerns, because they had already made the decision. What they were there for is to simply answer your questions. But if your questions would not result, if their answers would not result in any change, then the whole process got passed backwards. It doesn't make sense. Let me return to the issue I've talked about before, 7.5 and 6, which gives the board the power to throw the costs of pest control and damage onto our backs. The board keeps saying it was not their intention to do that, and they don't plan to do it. And I don't doubt their goodwill. I don't doubt the fact that they mean it. But what happens if these board members are outvoted? So there's no assurance when someone says, "Trust me." I've said this before, I'm an entertainment lawyer, and where I come from, the term "trust me" is often used interchangeably with another two-syllable word, phrase, a two-syllable epithet, which is not used in polite company, if you get my drift. So when someone says, "Trust me," don't. I hope this discussion has been helpful. It will be very helpful if the board, given the antipathy of so many of its members, would do three things: withdraw the proposal, handle the insurance issue separately, which we can easily do, and third, create a task force, conduct hearings, and listen to the members to find out what they really want in documents that will govern the way we live. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bob, would you give us your closing?
Yeah, I have a little different perspective from a family history standpoint. I have an aunt and uncle who moved here in 2000, in the 1960s. I have my daughter-in-law's, daughter-in-law's moved here in the 1980s. So I witnessed a lot of changes here. The allure of resort-style living was very, very compelling, and it remains compelling to date, but it's not as alluring as it once was. The reality is that we must recognize that our buildings take more repair as they age. Inflation is something over which we have no control. We have members who have financial worries, and the service levels depend upon how much we are willing and able to pay. There is help available, but it's going to take creative thinking and effort to implement anything. Continue to look for efficiencies, of course, but consider revising the shared cost methodology. Consider revenue sources that can augment assessments. And by all means, we must collaborate with the four, all four corporations on these important matters. So again, thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you so much. Bob, Rose?
Okay. If you haven't voted yet, and you're not happy with the current restatement documents and the process that produced them, then vote no December 3rd.
Thank you so much. And Catherine?
Yes, I hope our discussion has been helpful in understanding the new CCNRs and revised bylaws and why we are opposed. I support solving the insurance issue, and this should be addressed separately with an amendment to the existing CCNRs. The rest of the CCNR and bylaw issues should be held up for much further discussion to gain acceptance by having the members adequately involved in any needed changes. We have incurred considerable legal fees the past few years, and we need to take actions that prevent the community from incurring additional legal expenses by having a court fight over the CCNRs and the bylaws. Let's work together for the best interests of the community. Together, the members and boards can resolve the critical issues without incurring legal expenses, except for the final review by the lawyers of the agreed document changes. The boards need to remember that they are fiduciaries for the community, and that involves working with the membership. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have considerable experience with our governing documents, where we served on community boards, and we were involved with major legal issues. We also understand the community, for most of us have lived here more than 15 years. We understand containing cost is critical. We believe in listening to our residents. We believe legal costs are an issue. We do not want money wasted on litigation, and when this vote is over, we are asking that the board listen to the residents, that a sensible amendment be written that allows the board flexibility and yet protects the residents. Thank you so much. We want to give our thanks to Susan Loken-McCracken for her help, for Eileen Pollan, also for her help, to Paul Ortiz and the camera crew. Thank you so much, and thank you for this time, and thank you for listening.